Hi folks, we're going to call the meeting to order. We thank you for being with us this evening and joining us for a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. Meeting has been convened this, the 24th day of June 2014. As is duly assembled here this evening and called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask that you join us for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing while Councilman Riley bet us, leads us in an invocation.
I point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Almighty God, thank you that you have blessed this city in so many ways. Give this council the clarity and wisdom to always honor you in our decisions. Help us to remember the most needy of us in our city, just as you have taught. And may the glory of all we achieve be to you. I pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
For those of you that are joining us for the first time, we set aside a time at the first of each meeting for what we call a public forum. This is a time for those that have an interest, typically citizens, but we are going to open that up tonight to those that have indicated an interest to speak in our meeting. To come before the council and make your requests known or your opinions known. It's a time for us to hear those pleading before the council and help us in decisions as we go through the rest of the meeting. We've got a number of people that have asked for the opportunity to appear this evening and deference to all that have indicated that they would like to speak. I'm going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes this evening in that regard so that we can continue to move the meeting along and that everybody has an opportunity to have their voice heard this evening. Looks like we've got probably 10 or 12 people, so that's an adequate amount of time to hear your opinions this evening and we look forward to those comments. What I would ask is that if your name is called, that you would come to the podium and that you would state your name and address for a matter of record. We are obviously recording the meeting in a video context and an audio context and that will give us some reference as to who you are and where you reside as you take part in our council meeting this evening. So with that, we have one speaker that would like to address an issue that appears to be different from the rest of our speakers tonight. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Alan Collins if he would to lead us off this evening. And Mr. Collins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The item I'm here for is the rezoning of Foxfield Way subdivision. It is a subdivision of strictly patio homes. It was designed and built for patio homes. And when I became HOA president last year, I started looking into the way things were and everything and I discovered that we were still planning development subdivision. And we really need to be patio home subdivision. There's a zoning ordinance for that and that's what we are. So everybody agreed at the last meeting unanimously, the ones that were there, to put in to be rezoned for our five patio home subdivision.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Since you're facing this direction rather than the windows, if you left a window down, you might want to run out to your car real quick. That's not, that's not the fountain that's causing that. So, alright, with that then, we'll, we'll turn to those that have indicated that they would like to speak primarily in regards to ordinance number 16, 2014. It'll appear on our agenda a little bit later on this evening. And our first speaker this evening, and I am sorry, it's Cole and looks like maybe...
Truesdale.
Truesdale. Mr. Cole Truesdale. Floor is yours, sir.
I just have two questions on the ordinance. My first question, it goes in relation to safety. Normally there's like a traffic, traffic map analysis that's done. Certain stations are defined and counts are done. Was this done prior to the approval of this? And also, the proposed subdivision or single dwelling residence is three quarters of a mile west of where our subdivision is. Two miles east of us is also a brand new subdivision that's going up. Was this also taken into consideration when the analysis was done? That subdivision's already been started and is actually getting ready to start to build. So the traffic flowed through there? Was the analysis done for the safety, the roads? In this specific area where we're talking about putting this as a curve and a hill. So I can see accidents there. Especially with the road, I already know I get one off the road all the time. So mine's a safety related question with the analysis. And the other question is more to values. The original, it was, it was set for the development residential on R-15. This new, I guess, DRD, I guess allows anyone to just decide what's acceptable? And my question would be, originally with this was zoned. There was logic behind why it was zoned the way it was. So when the city accepted the rezoning, what logic was presented to say, change it from this to this? Because all I see in the area is more residential being built up and even larger residential homes. 250, 300,000 and above homes. And what I'm worried about is, is that with this rezoning, is it going to affect the property values? Is there going to be covenants and restrictions that protect us? If it doesn't develop the way it should develop, is a covenant restriction going to prevent us from renters, low income homeowners? So that's what I'm worried about. Those two questions related to the, the analysis of the road mapping and also what changed? What information was presented to allow for the rezoning? Because again, there had to be some type of logic originally for the original zone. And I would assume there was some type of logic behind the rezone, other than someone just wanted to put a whatever there.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Mr. Dacus, Norman Dacus.
Thank you. I have here an article printed in Sunday Morning's Great News and it doesn't concern this area at all, but it does concern some property values and that's one of the things we have very much concern for. I don't know if you're familiar with the cost of a acre of land in that area if there's more than one acre. Most homes in that area are four acres or more, quite a few are more. There's farms that have not been changed to residential use and very little business on that road, but there's some rental property. One is a home that built back in the 50s, it looks like, and that's prime for businesses. There's no businesses on that road. There was one that, I don't know what it was trying to accomplish, but it had a license from Spartanburg County, I believe, and they were open one day at the close. It's still there and it looks like it's in business, but it's not. We've yet to see that. I understand there's quite a bit of concern over on Highway 101 with the development over there that failed to get in on this same property. This is proposed. They're undergoing quite a bit and Greer's going to be facing that as well. They'll have plenty of customers buying water down on 101. We're not meeting tonight about 101, but I want to talk about property values. They're preset in regards to being close to the airport. That's not being addressed per se. People aren't going to be staying there or having an apartment there because they're flying all the time. That would be just as much a concern as far as property values concerned. I'm not going to talk about the traffic except for one thing. I understand that the highway department did a study about straightening out these curves. Well, they may straighten them out a little bit, but they're not going to do anything for it in regards to property values. It's got to come as far as traffic is going to be magnified by this development. I understand it's wanted, I understand it's set up, going to be approved, but I'm here tonight to speak against it because a year ago, we had history in regards to a much bigger problem just up the street on Joe Leonard. And it would not handle the traffic and thank goodness, it didn't happen. Even before that, they tried to develop the 22 acres, the same side of the road, but up near the church. That has failed to go to apartments. Surely, if this passes and is built, that will probably be apartments as well. It's just going to keep growing. The property on Joe Leonard was supposed to be by the deed when this builder passed away. He said four acres or more. Somehow they hired an attorney to change that and they were going to build what they wanted to. About 40 homes on 10 acres. What? That doesn't even sound right then. I question whether or not I have to write, but still it would not handle that traffic flow. And I will also mention again that these gravel trucks that are going to the quarry on East Highway, they're up and down in front of my house all the time, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Yeah, that's bad enough. They're going to run over somebody, that's all I can say. I've had one person die in my yard in 14 years. It's just a matter of time. With all those people on the road, there's going to be more deaths. The road's not big enough to handle what they have now. The new subdivision I believe he was talking about, it used to be partly horses and a stable and that property, I don't know the size of it, but they're already building homes there. They're not apartment homes, they're not less than a acre. I don't know what they are. They're going to bring in quite a bit of traffic long before these apartments are built. There's going to be delays, there's going to be plenty of problems just building these apartment homes. And then with the traffic in and out, maybe 24 hours a day, maybe not, I don't know, but the number of cars and trucks, gravel trucks, they stop on that hill. They're coming down the hill going fast, 45 is the speed limit. I don't know if you'll change it to 35, but you need to think about it before tonight is over. That needs to be 35 up and down that hill. My neighbors complained to the highway department, send somebody out there and they'll write so many tickets that they don't come back. They keep on doing it. I've seen it in Greenville, right in town, I live on 291 bypass, they came out with that intersection with East North Street. They wrote, looked just under 100 tickets one day for people turning around to go to work on 291. The next day, they wrote tickets to the same people. Not all of them, but they wrote about the same number of tickets. They folded up and left and didn't come back. And that's what we're going to have on that road. We've got people that own acreage, but they don't have farms that we're used to. Like back in the 50s, you could have 50 acres or 100 acres and farm it. There's not anybody doing that speaking on that. But we're going to have this traffic because of these people. We're going to have them anyway because of the subdivision going up. But I ask that it be four acres or more. And I think that's reasonable because that's what's in the neighborhood as far as people that are living at their residences is concerned. And I understand that this apartment complex is going to serve a need, but we desire it to be elsewhere. There's not going to be a fire station on this property, but it's going to be needed because they can serve the ones that are the closest to this apartment complex. There's no access for fire trucks to use Abner Creek Road. If there's any trouble at all at the apartment complex. If you have a wreck, somebody comes through, lands in the yard and there's a death, it's 3:30 AM when they left. That was right at six hours after the accident. Now that's what we're going to have to contend with is getting 10 actions since I've been living there, right at my house. Not in my yard, but that death was in my yard. It's just not something I want to try to live, much less all the neighbors that I have already. Now, this newspaper article...
Mr. Dacus, I would like to ask you to wrap it up, please, sir.
I sure will. I'll wrap it up by saying that the high court has already ruled that there does not have to be an agenda. That troubles us greatly. And I ask the city council to please keep the agenda as it is. It's quite a few cities in South Carolina are doing. Keep the people informed. We try to inform you, we know you have meetings, especially on Monday morning. It's very vital to run the city, most less the residential areas that are well outside the city or south of 85. And 85 itself is a terrible place. When I came here tonight, the Southbound was stopped dead still as far as I could see in both directions. That's common, very common now. I don't see them alleviating that at all. There's no frontage road south of 85 off of 14. There's no frontage road north of 85 except for the Endland Port Turnpike. And thank goodness you've already done that. I don't know how that came about, but I won't go into that. Terrible concerns about two fire stations that need to serve BMW. And it's going to be cut in half by this subdivision. If there was to be a frontage road in back of this property right along I-85, it did not get connected. They can't use it, they can't get away from having to go through this series of curves and downhill. My next door neighbor has counted the actions that he knows about that I don't even know about. They're going to BMW, but that's at 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, so I'm told, but I don't work out there, I don't know anything about it. But I can tell you it is of great concern. You need to hire six new police officers to serve a 24-hour basis just to deal with the traffic and whatever's going on inside the apartment home. That's a good deal of money. I don't see you building a fire station down there, but if you're going to have that much of development down there, it won't be long till they will need one just for the residents that are on that avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Robinson? Jessica Robinson?
Well, I signed up a call, we just want to ask questions, so I'll try and make this short and quick. I guess we moved out to Greer because we loved it there. It's very homey. We love the proximity of the home and the land. We have a lifestyle out there. I run almost every single day. We bicycle, we know all our neighbors. We do not want to see the decrease in the home value. We don't want to see the amount of traffic that's going to be coming along. And we don't want to be moved down the school zone. A lot of us move there for the school zone and we're afraid that we'll be kicked out of the school zone. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bender?
I'm Marsha Bender. I live at 245 Ebbett Court in Briar Creek, which is just down the road from the proposed apartments that are going to be built. And first I want to say, I am absolutely not opposed to growth. I work at Greer Memorial and if there wasn't lots of people coming, I wouldn't have a job. So I am not opposed to the town of Greer expanding. What I am opposed to though, in according to your 2010 comprehensive plan, the land use goals, which were the same as they were in 2004, clearly say, ensure that sufficient and varied housing opportunities exist for all citizens in the future with the least possible impact on roads, sewers, or community facilities. And that's the problem that I have. In 2004, there was a proposed rezoning on Abner Creek for an apartment complex and they were proposing 144 unit complex. The traffic study at that particular time said that they anticipated as a result of that, 932 extra vehicles using the road. I got online to try to see, I know there's been a lot of conversation about how much money is coming in the upstate for roads, repair of roads, expansion of roads. And Bill H. 3412, I mean, seems to be stuck in the mire. And granted, a lot of that has to do with the state roads, but it's expensive to try to rebuild roads and straighten it out. I have a real concern that this apartments that are going in would have a real negative impact on the road and negatively impact the community facilities, the fire department, just being able to get around. And of interest too, is that a little bit farther down on Abner Creek, I believe it's Horton is building a whole new subdivision. Now, most of those houses will probably access 85 on the Broadman McClyman, but there may be some coming down the road and it already does get it. There's quite a lengthy wait in just trying to get onto West Morlin at peak traffic. So I anticipate that that's going to get a whole lot worse. And where the road curves, oftentimes you make that final turn to go to West Morlin and you don't even see the traffic. When the roads are bad, there's a lot of drainage that covers that road and it becomes very icy and very, very dangerous. There had been conversation with the previously proposed apartment complex that they access on the frontage road. The frontage road actually comes in from Broadman McClyman and also comes in from 14. It is never connected, but at least that would alleviate that very dangerous section of road on Abner Creek. And you know, I, I don't know if there's been a recent impact, a traffic impact study. What I have been able to read is at any time that you have a subdivision plan, that you anticipate over 750 trips in any given day, that then you have another traffic impact study. And again, that was for 144, that says 144 units and we're talking about 170. The average age that they're saying is 52. So the empty nester philosophy that this is all going to be retired people, I don't think that has any validity at all. I think you're going to get a big cross-section of individuals for that they're very appealing houses. I won't say that they aren't. But for the price of the houses, it's, it's not quite like an apartment complex and yet for the number that there are, I'm genuinely concerned for the road. So I ask you to go back again and consider this, consider allowing that to not move forward because I do think that it'll have a great impact on the roads, the sewer, the community resources. And you know, my property value, but I'm, I'd like to live to be able to sell my house. Thank you.
Ms. Emmerich?
I think all my concerns have pretty much been covered, but I'll just go ahead and state them again. I've lived in the area for about four and a half years and we absolutely love it here. It's a great community and a great place to call home. My issues with the proposed community are related to the traffic, like everyone else has been mentioning. I drive about 45 minutes to work every day and it's, it's a challenge to drive on 85 and I don't want to add excess trouble on the front end of my trip and getting home, trying to fight the traffic, getting into my own neighborhood. I also have the same safety concerns on that curb and that hill where the two proposed exits and entrances are located. Doesn't seem like that's a very good location to have continuous traffic coming in and out with ongoing traffic, unable to see those cars due to the nature of the curb. Concerned with our property values as well and also setting a precedence for other types of communities that might try to come in and rezone and may not uphold the same standard. So in general, I just want to again state that I really do like the community and I hope we can uphold our quality of life here and protect the safety of all of our citizens.
Mr. Nation?
I'm Miles Nation. I live at 250 Fay Court in Harwood Place subdivision, which is just off Broadman McClyman. We do most of our travel on Abner Creek Road, except when we're using the new interchange to get on 85. I too am concerned with the traffic on Abner Creek Road. This is a road maintained by Spartanburg County and not maintained very well. They recently did work on it, fixing a lot of damaged spots on it. That damage is coming right back mainly because there is quite a bit of traffic on that road, including rock roads that are hauling gravel from the quarry. I know there's going to be development in this area. As they spoke of earlier, there's a new subdivision on Abner Creek right off the intersection of De Young and Abner Creek. That's 90 plus homes in there. I think this is just the beginning. I think we're going to see growth in this area, just like we've seen in some parts of Simpsonville where it kind of reaches a critical mass and you're going to see more and more. As they had mentioned, this is a rural area in transition. This is going to continue. I think you're going to see more and more requests like this come before Greer City Council because I think the builders are aware of this area now and with the recession over, we're going to see the growth in this area. But I just want Greer City Council and Greer Planning Department to take into consideration that there's going to be a lot of growth in this and to be concerned with density. There, it's going to develop. It's not fair to ask the owners of these large parcels not to sell and to reap the rewards of owning property in an area that's developing, but we just need to make sure that this whole area is planned in a reasonable way that doesn't overtax the infrastructure. There's people who have been in this community for a long time, who've lived in this area for a long time. I myself have lived in there since I was in middle school. So we need to maintain the quality of life that these people have in this area and again, just not tax the infrastructure. Thank you.
Ms. Tims?
I'm Abby Callan.
Alrighty. And our last speaker this evening, Josh Robinson.
Hello, my name's Josh Robinson. I live at 250 Ebbett Court in Briar Creek subdivision, right up the street from the proposed apartment complex. And I guess I could echo everybody else's concerns and validate those for myself, but if this were to go through, just curious to know why they could not use the signs all if they have, if they have 85 frontage. I don't know if they have a different access point, if they could access the complex from the frontage road where the city gas station is off of or not. I think it would help alleviate a ton of the traffic on Abner Creek and just prevent any access, you know, even back entrances or anything for the community on Abner Creek. It would help reduce all the concern from traffic, I believe. That's really all I have to say and just echo the sentiments of everybody else's spoken already.
Well, we appreciate you participating in this process tonight. It is, we've set aside this time to hear concerns and we appreciate you having taken the time to be here when we know that there are other, other events and family matters that are going on that you've set aside time to participate in this process. But not here for that, we thank you. And ask you to stay engaged with this process as some of the speakers have indicated. This is, this is an issue that I suspect will be at the forefront for many years from... This is, this is an issue that I suspect will be at the forefront for many years to come in terms of growth issues, and we do want to be attentive to those needs as we help direct growth and activity in a smart and reasonable fashion. And your concerns have been heard this evening, I suspect those that raised questions. I would imagine that some of our council took note, and hopefully we'll have a time to address those. We will, we will address this ordinance a little bit later in our meeting there, and we'll have an opportunity for council to speak both with our department head and with developer in this regard. So again, we thank you for your participation this evening. Would urge you as well to take advantage of a process that is underway in our city right now, and that is a community master plan. It is very intentionally designed for citizen input, and that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be a resident in the city. This is an opportunity to participate in that planning process, both from a active standpoint. We've already had one planning meeting here, and I would urge you to go on to the City of Greer website, and there are several links there, one which will take you to an opportunity to participate in a survey where your voice can be heard in that regard, and then to watch for future meeting opportunities, because as, as the city continues to grow, those, those growth issues will have impact to those that are a part of our larger community, and we want to make sure that everybody is involved in that process. So there is an opportunity for you to engage in that as we move forward with that plan. With that, then, we will move to the minutes of our council meeting. Council, you have the minutes from the June tenth meeting contained in your packet this evening. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any items, notes to clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, as always, you've got departmental reports there. You'll see the reports from May, these are updates in terms of activities from the various different departments, including our financial activities report that Mr. Seifert will bring us at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now, I'm pleased to bring to you the financial summary for the period ended May thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. At that time, we have general fund revenue recorded of seventeen million, ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars, with general fund expenditures being sixteen million, eighty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. That amount carries us at four percent under budget for the period ended May thirty-first. Referencing your dashboards, we have a positive revenue variance of one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, ninety-four dollars, and a positive expenditure benchmark variance of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one. Those two combined gives us a positive variance of one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, eighty-five dollars. We have a carrying cash balance ending at May thirty-first of six million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have year-to-date revenue recorded of one million, four hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, and a carrying cash balance of three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars. And finally, in the stormwater fund, we have year-to-date revenue of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and six dollars, with a cash balance being carried of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. That is the performance financial summary for the period ended May thirty-first. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, question, or comment?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. With that, then, we'll move to the administrative support. Mr. Driggers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Couple of calendar items as reminders for you, and one of those is that we are partnering with our local Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber Small Business of the Year recognition program. That'll be this Thursday evening. I have heard from a couple of you that you plan to attend with us if, if your plans, or if you'd like to do that, and I've not had an opportunity to talk with you, if you would just kind of meet me after the meeting, we'll help make sure that we can accommodate that as well. And we are looking forward to participating in that program. The mayor has a piece of that as well, where we present an annual mayor's award to one of our city businesses, and that'll be taking place on Thursday evening as well. That program is held here in City Hall in our event center, and it'll be from six P.M. until eight P.M. this Thursday evening. Paramount for us, and we're very excited to be hosting for our community this coming Saturday, our Freedom Blast Festival. It is a wonderful opportunity for us. We'll be beginning those festivities around six o'clock. The program really gets up and running about six o'clock. Our food vendors will be out and about, and we have the children's play area, the play zone. There'll be a number of exhibits, activities for families, wonderful music, and of course, we do a salute, a tribute to our veterans as part of our evening, and we will top off the night with a truly a spectacular fireworks show that will, that will showcase and end our evening here on the grounds of City Park. That will be taking place this Saturday here at City Park. We know that you plan to attend. We've provided some additional information to you on that event as well. We've had some wonderful communication, publicity within the community. As you well know, the lawn here at City Park will be filled. Every square inch of that space gets filled. We're looking out and are very hopeful for the, for the weather gods to cooperate with us on Saturday, and it certainly looks like we're going to be in a good position for that Saturday evening as well. So please, come, enjoy the festivities. It's a wonderful community time. We designed that event as truly a community event, and there will be thousands of folks that will join you for that local community activity. So Freedom Blast is this Saturday. Please join us. Some of you have asked us about opportunities to potentially participate in the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Greer Program. If you do have an interest, if you've not done that in the past, and some of you have, if you have an interest in participating in that year-long program, that, we have a deadline of July the tenth. We'll be glad to share some information with you. I think that program has been going on since about nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-nine? Is that right, Mayor?
I wouldn't have it.
Since you were in class one?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
It began somewhere in that period, was class one, but it is a wonderful opportunity. Many of us have had an opportunity to participate in it. If you have not, and you have an interest, please let us know. We will assist you in getting registered and signed up for that program. The mayor mentioned some information concerning our community master plan, and that is continuing. We invite you to go to plangreer.com. You can link to it through our website, through the partnership for tomorrow's website, the Chamber of Commerce website. There's a number of ways to get there, but we do encourage folks. We now have had in excess of five hundred of our residents that have filled out the community survey, and that number is growing on a daily basis. So word is getting out. So we have a tool there called MetroQuest. It is a very sophisticated, but a very easy survey tool. It enables you to prioritize your interest and concerns relative to this community as it continues to grow between now and 2030, and we are working with our consulting team as we continue to move forward with that planning process. And again, part of one of the most critical components of that at this point is getting feedback from the community. The survey is one of those tools. So we invite folks to go to plangreer.com, link to that, and give us some feedback. So again, encourage your constituents, residents within your homeowners associations, any contacts that you can, that you do have, that you can encourage folks to participate. The more, the better. As we continue to look at our growing community, as many of you already do, we are utilizing our customer service module. Our customer service module is on the front page of our website, www.cityofgreer.org. We receive a good number of requests for service through that site, but we are also in the process of doing some internal testing now to a smart device application. We are developing an app for us as well, and that app is giving us some great ability that our residents will be able to, to take a photograph of, of an area or an issue. That could be a pothole, that could be a burned-out streetlight, it could be any number of things. It could be a nuisance issue for a neighbor down the street. They can take a photograph of the issue and concern that they have through GPS. They can give us a location. It will locate immediately where they are, so if they're standing under a burned-out streetlight, they can simply tell us the location of that, report it as a burned-out streetlight, and then we're able to dispatch either through CPW or through our own crews. We can dispatch for that service request that needs to be taken care of. We are in the testing of that module now. We are anticipating in short order to be able to roll that out, and once we have completed that internal beta testing for the application, we will bring it to council, we'll demonstrate that here, and then we will roll that out to our community as well. So we wanted you to be aware, what we've had for a number of years is still up and running, and it's being used by our community, and we are expanding that now by being able to go to the smartphone, smart device as well through an application. We, we're very excited about that.
That new app is already out.
Well, it's, it's out for testing.
Oh, for testing.
It's, it's out for...
I tested it this morning.
Did it work well for you?
It worked pretty good.
Very good, very good. Well, that's the testing that we need to happen, so if you've already, if you've already found it and are using it, that's wonderful, but we want to make sure that it doesn't have any bugs in it before we roll it out to the public, but we're very, very glad to know that, to know that. Keep using it. That helps us internally make sure that it's ready to go. Fourth of July, our offices will be closed on that Friday, the fourth of July. Of course, all emergency operations will continue to take place. We have no interruption to our solid waste program because it's a Friday, so everything stays on schedule for us through that program as well. Those of you that are attending the Municipal Association Annual Meeting, we have you registered for that. It's a very informative agenda. You will see that there are a number of things that are in that agenda that will be of interest to you and to your colleagues across the state. If you have any questions concerning your registration or our attendance at that meeting, that'll be taking place in a couple of weeks, and we want to make sure that we have everything taken care of for that, but we believe we have everything in order as we, as we move forward and prepare for that as well. I will be out of the office for, for the next week. Wanted to make you aware that, that all provisions have been made back here at home, that if there are any issues or inquiries, that those can be addressed. Mike Sell will be on staff and available. Elizabeth is on staff and available. Tammy is on staff and available as well. But I am going to a location that does not have email service, and I'm going to a location that does not have mobile service. I can be reached by landline, which now is the, the old way, but the staff certainly knows how to reach me, and they can reach me during that time if you should need me, but I do not, I will not, because of location, have cellular service or email service during that period, and I thank you for that opportunity to be able to do that. My family and I are looking forward to spending a little time away, and we'll be excited to return, but we are equally excited to be going. So we, again, thank you for that opportunity, and you're in great hands with very capable staff while I'm away. I do not have any items that I would recommend to you for executive session this evening, unless they're items for you to address, otherwise we would be prepared to address the other items of your agenda for tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For those of you that are early birds, I believe that we will have some of our staff appearing on Fox News in the morning as we talk about the events coming up this weekend, and those will start early with their morning show around six o'clock, so if you want to tune in, I think some of our events staff and others from our staff that will be involved in that, in that event will be there, and I think you'll also get an opportunity to, to see our new mascot live and in action, and so if you want to rise early to see him, you'll have the opportunity to do that. Looking to see if the mirror, if the cameras are moving up and down, that's often an indication that the bird eye is upon us. With that, then, we'll move to appointments of boards and commissions. We have an opening on the Board of Architectural Review that comes to us this evening in terms that expire the end of this month. Mr. Pace, information in that regard?
Mr. Mayor, council, I can speak, or I have spoken to Ms. Wood, who is our current chairman of that board, and Mr. Hannan in regards to if they would be desirous of serving another term at your pleasure, and both have spoken in favor of that request, and therefore await your appointment if that is what you so choose.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Ms. Linda Wood to another term on the Board of Architectural Review.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions of Mr. Pace or discussion in regards to that term? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Let me pay a motion to receive, or entertain a motion to nominate Mr. Marnie Hannan for another term on the Board of Architectural Review.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions in regards to that term? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have had a resignation. You'll see that resignation attached. It's from District One in regards to Mr. Nelson's term. Mr. Arrowood is not with us this evening. Any additional information on your behalf, Mr. Pace, in regards to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
None at this time. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Arrowood is aware of the resignation, and he has informed me that he is in search of a replacement.
Thank you, sir. Of interest to some of you here this evening, we have an opening on the Greendale-Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission. This is the appointed that the City of Greer has on the Spartanburg County side. Mr. Nation's term expires six thirty-two thousand and fourteen, and we'll require action. Do we have a motion or information in that regard?
Yes, sir. I would actually like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Miles Nation, he served, and he has agreed to serve another term.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second in that regard. Any questions as to the reappointment of Mr. Nation to the Greendale-Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Planning Commission has two vacancies at this point in time. District Four Clay Jones has resigned his term effective six thirty, well, he has resigned his term, which is effective six thirty-two thousand and fifteen, and at large, Chris Harris has resigned his term, having moved outside of the city. Mr. Pace?
Mayor, council, again, Mr. Dumas is aware of John Tracy's resignation. I don't know if he has anyone to bring forward tonight, but we have had discussion in regards to that.
All right. I was just going to wait till next week. Sorry. No action this evening in regards to the Planning Commission. With that, then, we'll move to items of new business, the first reading of which is ordinance fifteen dash two thousand and fourteen. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighty-six, Article Two, Division One, by repealing in its entirety Section eighty-six sixty-eight prohibiting the use of mobile telephones for text messaging, electronic media, or emailing while driving, including the office, exceptions, and penalties. Mr. Driggers, any information in that regard, please, sir?
Mayor, council, as you are aware, the state of South Carolina has enacted a texting ban, which is now a provision of state statute, as is the policy of the state of South Carolina. State statutes do trump, overrule those local ordinances that we would have in place. We have provided at your place this evening a copy of that legislation, and for us to keep our books good and clean, because since this is superseded to our local ordinance, we are recommending to you that we would repeal that ordinance on our books.
I'll entertain a motion that we... I'll entertain a motion that we take action in regards to the first reading of ordinance number 15-2014. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Appropriate, that is hard as Ms. Albert were to get this passed. She would make the motion to repeal that.
I would like to say that I am glad that the state came forward. I do feel like it's the cities that went ahead and put a ordinance in place that made the state go ahead and move forward on this. They'd been working and talking about it for several years, from my understanding. So I think it was great that the cities went ahead and placed ordinances in place, even though ours weren't supposed to go into place until July the 1st. But anyway, it is good for it to be statewide. I feel like there are a little slack on their penalty, their driving violation. It's only a $25 fine, as opposed to where most of the cities had a $100 fine. And there's, I believe, you know, like no court cost and things like that. So disappointing on that end, but glad to see something that will cover the entire state, so everybody won't be guessing when they go from city to city.
Others? Tip of the hat, Ms. Albert. She, she indeed worked very hard on this, and for quite some time, I might add, and-
Well, I feel like I tipped the iceberg.
That's right, that's right. Indeed, you did. One of the last ones passed before the state took action.
That's right.
Once, once they found out we took action, they were-
That's right. They had got them on the road.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance 16-2014, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Clarence Frank Dillard, located on Avenue Creek Road from PDR, which is Plan Development Residential and R15 Residential, to a DRD, which is a design review district. Mr. Pace?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, thank you. Tonight's ordinance is proposed change to that, or to that area, to DRD. Planning Commission did meet on June 16th. A public hearing was held. We had a number of residents speaking opposition to, speaking some of those same issues that were, you heard tonight also, before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission or staff had recommended for approval of rezoning request, and Planning Commission did go unanimously 5-0, as the other two had resigned, and make that recommendation to you tonight.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir. Council, questions, Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mr. Pace, can you explain what the PDR and the R15 is? I think a lot of, I'm sorry, I think a lot of citizens don't really understand exactly what we're here for this evening in completion.
All right. I'll try my best to explain that and get it into layman terms, into training terms.
Yes.
Going from R15, which is residential zones, single families detached, that requires a 15,000 square foot lot, and/or cluster development could happen that would still give you the same density, but lots could be much smaller in preservation of infrastructure. That's what R15. PDR, when this was done and annexed in '95, I believe it was, that was the zoning classification given to this piece of property, or it changed in that process, it was a couple of other things. But PDR, at that time, a lot of areas were using that as planned development residential. However, the State Supreme Court has ruled that those type developments, if they are undeveloped now, are basically unconstitutional in the fact, or didn't meet the criteria, not unconstitutional, didn't meet the criteria for enabling legislation, which call for a mixed use of development and not mixed use of residential. It meant mixed use of commercial and residential to that property. So that classification has somewhat changed for us, and it, in effect of the Supreme Court's ruling, we develop the Design Review District, which follows a lot of the same characteristics. However, it does allow for that single-use development, and this one could be as residential. It does give us the ability to review the documents as they come in. There's not an outright permitted use applicable to that property. The developer will bring forth a presentation with statement of intent, elevation models of the units constructed, and various other things that are required by the city. If the developer does not follow the process and the statement of intent that is presented, then the developer is put on hold until such a time that he can see changes through the Planning Commission, and if there are major changes, back through this board in order to change that. So it does have a step process into it that allows us an opportunity to have better eyes on the development as it takes place.
Thank you. I wanted to just address, I've spoken to probably most of you all that are here this evening, but I wanted to address it publicly, that the issue that's before us tonight is simply about the zoning of that property, not if they can have the property, if they can build that on the property or not. Our responsibility this evening is to say yes or no to changing the zoning classification from residential, where we won't have as much control, to DRD, Design Review District, where we will have more control over what they can build. Just as we can't come to you and tell you what you can build on your property or land, the representative here for his neighborhood that he's building, we have more control over what he's actually presenting there this evening. So I did want to make that publicly known, as to why my vote would be a yes, for this zoning change. And that's all we're voting on this evening, is the zoning change. We're not voting on, can he have that property? Can he change any of that in that area? So I just wanted to make that known publicly.
Mr. Pace, there was a number of questions in regards to impact, particularly traffic impact, and I know that we, in the past, have worked closely with developers to mitigate that, and there were some specific questions in regards to various different types of studies and those types of things. What are, what are the triggers that are within our guidelines that we look to? I know in commercial projects that that oftentimes may be part of it. I know that it's not quite as common in the residential, but what are, what are those triggers that we observe?
Okay, Mayor, in our land development regulations, we have traffic analysis impact study that is required for units that will be producing more than 100 trips per day. An apartment does fall within that category, and therefore, we have asked the developer at our planning advisory committee meeting to produce a traffic impact study analysis on the property and the entrances to the property. And as of hand-delivered copies this afternoon, and an email I received late Friday afternoon, they have submitted those documents to us for review at this time. I, not being an engineer, I would reserve the right to have an engineer speak more in regards to that, in regards to the traffic impact study. And if you desire a copy of that, I do have an available copy here tonight for you.
You mentioned another critical piece of our planning process that I think might be well to touch on, which is the questions raised about impact to infrastructure and other services. That is a, that is a piece, actually a very integral part of our planning process that is, is thoroughly reviewed on the front end of these types of projects. Do you, would you give us some, some oversight in terms of the review process that, that goes through before we ever even get to this point?
Yes, sir. We do have what we call a Planning Advisory Committee. We commonly refer to it as PAT. They meet case-by-case basis. We're scheduled to meet on monthly, if we have cases. This case is presented to this group, this is made up of the entire city staff in regards to each department. Each department is represented at that meeting. That includes building codes, fire, police, business license, public services, and planning. It also involves SEDO chief. It involves the county, if they desire to have input into that situation, either Spartanburg or Greenville. It involves Greenville County School District into that process, and if it is impacted to a, this one, Reba, or anyone else, they are usually at those meetings and provide input to the developer and to the engineers at that time, any requirements that the city would have. And again, we review those documents. We make recommendations as the review process moves forward as to ways to mitigate certain issues, lessen impact on infrastructure, sewer, water, gas, those type utilities that are out there, and making sure that we do that in an effective manner. We've done that a good bit, and development is happening very actively in the south of 85 area, and we've had quite a number of reviews and quite a number of committee meetings. But we usually produce fateful results and fruitful results and continue to do so.
How is that process the same or different than the process that Spartanburg County would use for unincorporated areas?
I don't know that Spartanburg County has a process. Other than approval.
Council? Mr. Pace, there was, there was, I've got a note here about the frontage road. Is, is any of that area, well, I know the area where the hospital is, is currently zoned. Other areas along that road, at one point in time, there was a proposal for a fairly large commercial development in that area. Is there zoning in place along that frontage road for areas that are in the city currently?
There are areas inside the city that do front, a small portion of frontage roads there. However, this property does not front that frontage road. There's other properties that intermeagle that. And some of these properties, as it was my understanding, that still was in a very fluid movement at that time, but it incorporated, I think, approximately 300 acres. It would have impacted a lot of these areas, and we were looking very diligently at how they would impact these areas and ways to mitigate those impacts very early on. But again, the economy changed that for us.
And I believe one of the ways that we intended to mitigate that impact was to make sure no roads were cut, were cut through from the frontage road back to Avenue Creek. Was that correct?
Yes.
To make sure that none of that commercial traffic flowed back into those neighborhoods?
We were looking more at pedestrian ways and those type avenues to get residents an opportunity that may live in that area, foot traffic or other means to get into that residential area, but not vehicular traffic.
Thank you, sir.
What was the price point of those homes that are being built out there, or going to be built?
Okay, those were, again, the apartments, it was my understanding from Mr. Gillespie that they're in the $1,100 to $1,500 a month range.
That's the rental amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you mean what the values of the homes are?
Uh, no, ma'am, I didn't know.
Questions to Mr. Pace, comments? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Mr. Gillespie, I believe you indicated that you were the owner of the property, or the representative of the owner of the property?
Mr. Mayor, member of council, I am very glad to be here tonight. I'll just get in my soapbox just for a minute. When I first came to Greer a number of months ago, I went to the Chamber of Commerce, I talked to various people in the, in the city about what's going on, and I got to tell you, and I think it was backed up by the finance report that's tonight, very positive city. We like what we see. I'm the senior vice president of acquisitions. My role is to find markets where our company can excel. And if you know a little bit, it's been described about our product. We are a builder of single-story ranch-style apartment homes with attached garages. And all, all the communities that we build are the same in terms of the concept. I made a note here, I was thinking, I read a book about 10 years ago, it was written by an author, Jim Collins, it was called Good to Great. I don't know if any of you have ever had a chance to read the book Good to Great, but it's all about focusing on core principles, and that's what Redwood does. We don't build anything other than what I have proposed to be built on this property. And we're, because we have focused on that, we are, we enjoy in the industry a, an outstanding reputation and capability to grow, because you don't grow in today's world unless you're doing things right. So that's my soapbox. We are excited to be here. We look forward to being part, I was listening to the administrator's review of the Freedom Blast, and we are involved in all the communities that we, we do, we build our communities in. So I can tell you, you can look forward to seeing us being involved in things like this and other things. We have, we are a property management company. If you came to develop, or most are the other way around, they're developers first, and they develop property management sort of on the side. We started the other way around. And because of that, we have a very customer-focused philosophy and business management practices. So it means we're going to have onsite resident managers who live there, people, maintenance people who live there, very different from most apartments. And I, and thank you, Ms. Booker, for describing what I was going to do, which is the DRD actually gives the city more control over what is done there than the current zone does. When I first talked to Glenn about what was going on and why, he want, he said, this is what you need to do. I was, he'll remember, I was in complete agreement, because all of the things he said that we would have to do, we already did. So he wasn't telling me that I would have to do something that was counter to what we do. So I felt fine, let's go ahead and do this. And I think it's important that the people do know that this actually gives the city far more review right over this development, residential or commercial, if it was commercial, than, than they currently have, which allows our use, but this is a more restrictive zoning. So we're okay with that. I heard some talk about speak to the call for diversity of housing types. That's what this is. A successful community, a strong community requires a diversity of housing types, and we know that our product and our, you heard our rents, you know what the product is all about, is going to be very well-received in this market. We have confirmed capacities. I do have Paul Harrison, Blue Water, I'm going to ask, to speak briefly to the traffic study that has just been done, because he is an engineer, he does understand it. But Paul and I have had conversations with CPW about the impacts, and I can tell you, without getting all details, they were all very positive, and we actually have confirmed capacities enough to do what we need to do. And I will speak to the, I'll let Paul speak to the traffic. So this meets the city's call for development control. It's something we're in agreement with, because again, I wasn't asked anything that I wouldn't normally want to do. As to traffic, I will just say this, I'll let Paul speak briefly about it, but of all uses that could be built on this property, be it PD or DRD, our use and the study that we just had completed, I knew this, but a study by a local engineer, a traffic engineer who does this, is always better than my history or understanding what we do. We would be the least, if not the least, certainly one of the least impactful in terms of traffic. And again, Paul can talk a little bit about that if we need. So I'm, I'm happy to be here. I want to work with the city. I want to be part of the city. We're going to do a great job. I can tell you, you're going to be very proud of what we do, and a lot of folks are going to like the end result. So that's, and I, I'd like Paul just to say a few words about his knowledge of the traffic.
Scott, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm sure, I know we just gave the reports to Glenn just before the meeting, but I would encourage you to take a look at those traffic reports. We actually contracted with Gay Sprague, Sprague and Sprague Consulting, and had her do current traffic counts on Avenue Creek Road. Actually, we had our, we pulled our traffic counts before, before school was released, so school was still in session when we had our, our traffic counts conducted. And we had Gay look at, look at trip generation reports that would be generated from a, from And we had Gay look at, look at trip generation reports that would be generated from a neighborhood with the concept that we're proposing. And we had her look at the trips generated, we had her look at existing traffic counts, and we had her to analyze the need for left-turn lane access into the community. We also had a chance to speak with Craig Nelson with SC DOT, he works directly with Eric Dillon, traffic engineers on Pleasantburg Road. We discussed the site with them, we discussed our two means of access, where we were proposing our accesses to the roads, or to Abner Creek Road. And we've actually been out to the site, we've looked at site distance at both entrances. And I'd like to just touch on this too. You know, this is a small part of the whole development process. I mean, we still have to do design plans, we still have to do construction plans, we have to submit to the city, we have to submit the DOT. So DOT is a part of the review process and looking at our drives and making sure we adhere to the, to site distance regulations and left-turn lane analysis. And our report that we did, we would definitely present that to the DOT, and they would probably require that anyway. So we did look at that, and I think you can see by the traffic counts, and I'll let you read the whole report, but I do just want to kind of touch on what Scott said earlier about the trip generation. I know this very well, because I'm involved with the rezoning right now on Woodruff Road, in the five-fourths area. And it's been a very long and tough process, but we're proposing a similar type neighborhood. And I originally got Ms. Sprague to kind of take a look at that one, and then we thought we got a second opinion from a traffic consultant from Columbia, down in Columbia. And the trip generation reports from a neighborhood like we're proposing are far less than a single-family detached neighborhood. And there's a whole lot of background and a whole lot of reasoning to that. And one of the biggest reasons is the, you have a lot of bigger families moving in single-family detached neighborhoods. You don't have a lot of families with two kids or three kids moving into a single-family detached apartment like this, like we're proposing. And as you're well aware, I have two kids and I drive, you know, we'll go to school in the morning, we can pick them up in the evening, we'll go to baseball practice, we'll go to this, we'll go to that. So it, kids generate more traffic. Having kids in a neighborhood generates more traffic. I'm not going to sit here and say that we're not going to have any kids in the neighborhood, but I would think far less. And I do stand behind what Scott says, and I stand behind what Ms. Sprague says in her report that, you know, we're generating, you know, I would say almost half, but far less trips than a typical single-family detached neighborhood would generate. And when you go back and look at what was originally proposed for that property in oh-seven or oh-six or oh-seven, we actually, my company had the pleasure of kind of doing some work on that. And you're looking at generating ten to twenty times more traffic on Abner Creek Road if something was to happen with that property like it was proposed right then. So, that's about all I want to say. I mean, if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but there's a lot of review that's going to take place down the road, and I think, you know, with your approval and with your support, I think we can, you know, go through the process, and I think we'll have a great community and a great project.
Counselor, questions of Mr. Gillespie or others?
Mr. Gillespie, what's the price point on those homes?
The homes all have attached garages, I'd say about ninety percent of them are two-car. We do, because we are all, what's unique about is we are, all of our homes and all of our site access is ADA compliant. Very few communities, be it for sale or rental, are all ADA compliant. And I'll say this, if you go into one of our homes, it doesn't feel like a handicap unit, but it means all the interior access points. And again, that's part of our, that's part of our target market, which is to get older adults that can see themselves living comfortably in this. So we are ADA compliant in all of our homes. They range from about eleven-hundred to twenty square feet to fifteen-hundred, and we do, we are planning to offer some homes along some of our ridges with walkout basements, been a very popular addition. And those are finished areas, they have about three to five hundred square feet, so the home size could actually range up to eighteen hundred square feet for those homes. Our rental ranges are in north of a dollar square foot typically, and they will be here. So they're going to be in that twelve to fifteen hundred range, and there may be some in the top eighteen hundred, but again, that's for the larger, the ones with the walkout basements.
Price point on, how many values of them?
Well, the development at the current size, as we see, it's going to be about an eighteen million dollar community. So if you divide that out, it's going to be, a typical apartment is probably a hundred, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. Ours are in that a hundred and ten thousand dollar kind of range typically. And that's mostly because of the way we do our parking and our garages, which people, we have a lot more invested in that than typically is done.
Other amenities of the project?
Yes. We do not sell clubhouses and pools, because our, all of our thrust is on, in our sort of mantra or motto, the company is peace, quiet, and comfort. That's what we sell. We will have an extent, we talked to Glenn about this with the staff, we will have an extensive walking path system, we have a large airport environs area. I'm not going to say it's a third of the site, but it's a big part of the site, that we're going to have two, at this point, it's two, it could be combined into one, large retention wet pond, not a dry pond, but a wet pond, we'll have aerators, and we're going to have, and it's beautiful wooded area, I've actually been down there, and we're actually going to do a, there's some very nice big old oaks in there that we are, in fact, we talked to Paul about this today, we're going to have a, we're on our tree survey, and I said, "Let's spot those," because one of them is in the area of one of our ponds, I said, "Let's move it, let's save those big oaks down in that area." Because the number-one amenity in any community today, and I'm sure you're all reading this if you kind of study it, is walking trails. It's not necessarily clubs and pools and tennis courts and all that sort of thing. It's walking trails. And we're going to have a whole system that's going to connect up with our sidewalk system internal, with down into the site, and it's going to be, it's our main attraction. Whenever we have this opportunity with this kind of open space, which we do, because it's an airport environs area, we can't build there, we need large detention ponds, we have a creek, beautiful wooded area, we're going to have walking trails through that. So that's a long-winded way of saying that's our primary community amenity. Open space. We are intensive on our landscaping, so that's, again, part of what we're selling.
Do you have another project that's on these same guidelines, that maybe, you know, they could look up on the internet or anything, see a visual?
Yes, yeah. Thank you. I encourage anyone to go to BuyRedwood.com. That's our website, that's B-Y Redwood dot com. We have numerous new current videos, in fact, we're putting a new one up, I think, this week. It's a recent opening that we had in the town of Hudson, Ohio, which is a very upscale community, one of the best in the Cleveland area, where the mayor's speaking about it. So I hope you had a chance to see that, very proud of it. And we have, so yeah, on BuyRedwood, you can see our map, Road with Grum, you can see many videos, both interiors and exteriors. And because I said earlier, we've focused on this product, it's not like we're going to come in here and do something different from what you see on that, so that's what we do.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Pace?
Have nothing else in regards to this question, as I understand that aspect.
Counselor, first reading of ordinance seventeen dash two thousand and fourteen is before you undertake a motion received.
Second?
Have the motion, second floor is open for discussion.
Mayor, the only other thing I wanted to add to this real quick, was that some of the issues that were brought up, facts and citizens, are not things that are directly bad. Us as a council would directly affect the course of school zonings or the infrastructure in itself. A lot of that is handled by the county level. We can't control schools, and God knows, we have fought for roads. So, I did want to make sure that that was addressed also.
Well, it brings up a good point, and I would like to offer as well too, just for insight, for those of you that have remained and are part of this discussion. I actually serve on the National Leadership Council for Smart Growth America, and have been involved with those folks for several years now, and have just returned from a conference in DC where we met with developers and builders and real estate folks that share the same ideologies of smart growth America. And my involvement with that group comes out of a very deep-seated desire to do what is best for our community. Having sat in this seat for fifteen years and seen the population of this city essentially double in the last twenty years, I think it's critical that we address some of the very issues that you have raised tonight, as we try our best to create not only smart growth, but orderly growth that is best suited for our citizens. We were among one of the first communities in the upstate to create subdivision regulations. And there was much gnashing of teeth about that, because there were a number of developers and builders that stood before this very council and said that if we affected the rules of subdivision regulations, that we would kill growth altogether in this area. Many of you remember when we said that you had to put in interior sidewalks, and you have to do signage, and you'll have to do turning lanes if necessary, and you're going to have to do berms and divisions between commercial property and some of the things that people take for granted. Now, we were assured by some of the very folks that are building quality homes in this area, that they would never build another home here. And I think that what we have found is that the higher our standard and the better the projects, the better that our citizens like that and enjoy a quality of life. It is a, it is a fact that density creates efficiencies. And for those of you who argue that you enjoy your four acres or your hundred-and-four acres, the best way that you can be afforded the opportunity to continue to do that, as long as you own that property or as long as you wish to maintain that property, is exactly to do that. Allow those projects that create efficiencies to be part of the mix of the community. As you are aware, this council has not annexed a piece of property by intent, by our intent, in the last fourteen years. And I think it is a commitment that this council will, is resolved to continue to do. Those annexations that have occurred have been at the request of the property owners, and that is your right as a private property owner. If you don't want to come into the city, you just don't have to. We understand that. We respect that. Some of us choose to live in downtowns, and some of us choose to live in rural areas, and we realize that that's what makes up part of the diversity of our community. There are opportunities, and Ms. Booker touched on a couple of those. Roads, schools, infrastructure are all controlled by different agencies, and this is an opportunity for us to work together. Ms. Hall and the folks from Spartanburg County have initiated, as well as we have, some opportunities to talk about what this area will look like and the issues that it's going to face over the next twenty or thirty years, as we work on our master plan. And this is an opportunity for us to engage in the kind of conversations that will allow you to have some input into that as well. Unfortunately, there is a meeting going on simultaneous to this one, that I'm sure many of you would have liked to have been at, as Ms. Hall talked about, some issues that are going to be relevant to the 101 area. But we will continue to engage the county and the school district as we seek to do what is best in that regard. So with that, I'd just like to say that if there's going to be growth, and as Mr. Nathan said, as a real estate agent, I think he's well-first in that, this is an area that is going to continue to grow. And I think that, who better than to put that growth in the hands of than a city that has experience? Many of you have lived in communities and counties that lack the kind of appropriate planning expertise and enforcement, and have seen the effects of that. And I offer to you that the city will do what is in best regard for its citizens in terms of creating a quality of life experience. And so with that, others?
Mayor, if I may offer one comment, please. Obviously, there are some questions from residents in the area, and we certainly understand that there is a desire and a need for them to get some answers to some of those questions. We certainly make our staff resources available to help be the conduit to get that information. What folks may not recognize is that through this legislative process, that it is not a question-answer forum session. That the very nature of the proceedings this evening is legislative in nature, and therefore, that's why that is not part of this process. But we do want to make sure that folks get answers to their questions. I encourage those to be directed through Mr. Pace in his office, and our commitment is that we will seek to get answers for you. If it's information that we have, we will make sure that is communicated to you. If it is not information that we have as the city, then we will direct that information to folks that we believe we can get that, those answers for you, whether that be through the developer, or the owners of property, or through SC DOT, or whoever that may be. But we will make a commitment to help get those answers for you. We want to make sure that your questions are addressed. We may not be able to answer those to your satisfaction, but we certainly want to make sure that you get answers based on the information that we have. And we have, we have the ability to do that, but tonight's forum is not how that would best be addressed. And I wanted to make sure our residents are aware of that, that we will get their questions answered or get them directed to the right folks, that we are not insensitive, insensitive to that. But there's a way for us to do that.
Indeed.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, this is an opportunity to engage in a longer conversation, a deeper conversation, and for you to be involved in that. And we are available, and we'll gladly entertain those questions and get you the information in an appropriate manner.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Tanner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance seventeen dash two thousand and fourteen, this is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned on Fox Field Way and Chandler Road from PD to R5. Mr. Pace?
Again, Mayor and Counsel, you've heard here tonight, also in the public forum session, of residents in the area of Foxfield Common that have desired to seek rezoning of the entire neighborhood, and they have worked very closely with staff obtaining majority approval from the residents in the area to, in fact, incorporate that rezoning request. Staff has worked with them, and there is some vacant property that was a part of the original development that still remains undeveloped, that they had some concerns on, and the city has taken that on, and the owner of the property was served due notice to speak in opposition or in favor of the request, and has not stepped forward to do so. And therefore, at the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request. We two spoke in favor of the request, and the planning commission did recommend for approval of the rezoning request to R5 patio homes.
Show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Be shown that someone indicates it. Questions to Mr. Pace? Is there any comment that you'd like to make in regards to the request, the ordinance?
Just a follow-up, I said.
As I already said, it is a majority of the neighborhood, in fact, it's fifteen out of nineteen, or the others are just the same.
Thank you, sir. Entertained motion to receive.
Second.
Have a motion in the second floor, it's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Danner.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening. We stand adjourned.